We'll go ahead and get started. I'm not gonna hit the gavel again. We are working a little bit with a couple of different technologies, both by phone and then on this, so we have a quorum and we're able to continue on with the meeting right now and it may iron out throughout, so. We love technology when it works. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Okay, we have a pretty full agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
I can second.
I second that.
Thanks, Janine. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda. I will go through the items. And if anybody would like to pull anything out or discussion, we can. Minutes of the October ninth, twenty twenty four district board meeting. B is revised procedure sixteen dash zero one code of conduct and code ethics. C revised policy seventeen. Insurance and indemnification. D revised procedure eighteen dash zero one reimbursement and travel. E new policy four zero seven continuity of operations. Dr. Russ Rothmer, acting CEO. And that's it for the consent agenda. If there are any questions, discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Perfect. Thank you. I hear Jean. Zach, do we have any public comments? Great, thank you. And we do have some great presentations coming up. First, we'll start with excellence at Ames with Shannon McCaslin, Dina students.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Here we are, only forty eight hours until the big, the big day. And I have the awesome privilege of introducing one of our graduating students to you. The screen says it all. Sarah Woods loves life and loves flying drones. She is our first graduate in the new UAS program. Woo, woo! And she's the first woman graduate too. She's blazing trails around here, both metaphorically and literally. I'll be honest, I didn't know a lot about the UAS field when I met Sarah, when I invited her to chat. So I spent some time barraging her with questions. Here's a snippet of what I learned that she may not have enough time to tell you. She's the only female on the drone team at Excel Energy. She's already been hired there, friends. She's probably gonna make more than I do. Good for you, Sarah. Drones protect lives. As a pilot for Excel, she can fly a drone inside of power plants in places where it would be dangerous for us humans to go. Third, she didn't actually started Ames in the UAS program. Maybe she'll tell us about that. And she's writing UAS curriculum for pilots on the team at Excel already. So enough from me. I'm pleased to introduce you to the all-in trailblazing Sarah Woods.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah Woods and I want to thank you all for having me today. Friday is a surreal day for myself because a lot of sacrifices have been made to get here. Due to COVID, I took a gap year after high school and worked full-time before my attendance at Colorado State University. Once I started school at CSU in the beginning of twenty twenty one, I was searching for interest or passion in my studies. At my expense, I struggled to find purpose at a large school and ended up leaving after one year of attendance. Being a good student my whole life was a large part of my identity. And when the lack of passion at CSU was also reflected in my grades, it was hard to see where my next steps were in education. I then proceeded to take another gap year. I worked full-time at a local running store to understand what my next steps were moving forward. When I stumbled upon the UAS program at Ames, it was what I was searching for in a school. It offered a tangible job after college, small class environments, and an education that would challenge me. When I first came to Ames, I was unsure of my capabilities of being a woman in STEM. But as the years have progressed, I've discovered a love for what I do. I have accomplished so much during my time here at Ames. I accelerated my graduation date by taking extra classes. I'm graduating with honors. I am and will continue to work at Excel as a UAS pilot, and I even fit in training for a fifty mile trail race in Washington. I also want to thank Jake Marshall for allowing me to be a successful person in this degree. He has empowered me to leverage my strengths and has consistently supported me, always having my best interests at heart. As I prepare to leave Ames, I'm truly grateful for everything I was seeking two years ago. A job that allows me to work outdoors, the development of valuable technical skills, and the motivation to pursue even greater opportunities in the future. It's been an honor to share this moment with you today, and I sincerely thank you for the privilege of having me. Thank you.
Now, on behalf of the trustees, we would like to congratulate you, Sarah. And what's, what's really exciting, this exemplifies Ames and as do you, that we establish programs that create passion and we have people who support you to help you be successful. And so as you go out and you work with Excel, I want you to remember that you're always an aardvark and that you are a trailblazer, and you may not believe that. But as a trailblazer, you need to set the pace and the stage for other people, and you need to tell them to follow their passion and be as successful as you. So on behalf of the trustees, congratulations. You betcha.
Thank you, Trustee Hayfley. Thank you, Sarah. Congratulations, and you'll do great things. Okay, next up, our representatives to the board. We have our Ames Faculty Association with Ryan Maeda.
Right, it's always a hard, hard act to follow. Who could match that kind of excitement, right? Chair Shock, trustees, cabinet members, Dr. Rothmer, I just thank you for giving this opportunity once again to present. I brought somebody else to present to you today instead of myself because I know you guys like to listen to people more exciting than me, but Jennifer Markowitz, come on up. She's one of our faculty in the business department. Jennifer has been with Ames Community College since two thousand and eighteen. She's been quite the entrepreneur with a couple of different businesses in her life, as well as being, serving as the executive director of Saba and Fort Collins before coming here. Before that, she also worked at Crossroads Safe House as the Director of Development and Sustainability. She's received numerous ripples in her time here from students, staff, and faculty at Ames, and was chosen last year overall as the employee of the month. In the past six years, she's become an integral part of and a crucial member to the business faculty and is super passionate about her students. One of the things that I think amazes me about her and what she's gonna spill to share with you a little bit today is that faculty here at Ames, we don't stop innovating. We don't stop being okay with just how things are. We're always looking at how to innovate and create new things, and Jennifer is piloting a new program for our faculty, and she has definitely stepped outside of the bounds of normal here at Ames, and she's here to share a little bit about the pilot program for our study abroad program. Jennifer.
Thank you for allowing a few minutes today. So you've probably seen study abroad on the strategic plan, and perhaps you've been discussing it amongst yourselves as well. Study abroad programming offers a number of benefits to students. Most recent research focuses on career readiness. We know that our students are competing in an increasingly equal workforce, and employers are reporting that they need individuals who are able to navigate different cultures, communicate with diverse audiences, problem solve. These are skills that students can develop in study abroad programs, and beyond those long-term career benefits, more immediately, students who study abroad have higher retention rates, higher graduation rates, higher GPAs. And it's not just students who already had high GPAs and are choosing to study abroad. Students who study abroad report and demonstrate that they have a stronger commitment to their academics and they have closer ties to their college community, which of course leads to improved academic outcomes as well. So those are a few of the reasons that I'm motivated to bring these opportunities to Ames, and I have been working with an incredible team through the study abroad committee. We have representatives from just about every department on campus on the study abroad committee, and I must say that the caliber of talent that we have here at Ames is truly remarkable, and it's really been a pleasure to work with each of our committee members, and they have just brought a wealth of experience and knowledge and expertise that I think is helping us to build a really strong study abroad program. With that, what we've been working on is a short-term faculty-led model. What that means is short-term is defined as eight weeks or less. What we're aiming for in the pilot is ten days. Faculty-led means that our current faculty would be developing curriculum to meet the learning outcomes of their existing courses, and then incorporating study abroad learning outcomes as well. They would then travel with their students into the host country to deliver that curriculum. So sometimes when people hear study abroad, they're picturing students going overseas for an entire semester and studying at a different college. That's not the model that we've been working on, primarily because it just isn't practical for most of our students to be away for that long. And so with that, with the pilot program, we are planning to launch in summer twenty twenty six with ten days in Bandoran, Donegal, Ireland. At the end of November, we opened our request for proposal process so that faculty could submit proposals to teach. Of course, in that pilot program, we asked folks to submit an interest form so that we could get an idea of how much interest there was in the program, and we have faculty who report faculty from psychology, sociology, anthropology, philosophy, communication media, business, music, and criminal justice have all demonstrated interest in teaching. So we have a lot of faculty who are enthusiastic about bringing these opportunities to our students as well. In order to be considered for the pilot program, the course does have to be credit-bearing and has to count towards a degree or certificate, and that's primarily for financial aid purposes. As terms of the timeline, course proposals have to be in by January twenty seventh. We have a proposal review committee who will evaluate those written proposals. The applicants will present to the committee on February seventh. Committee will make recommendations to Dr. Ailer. Dr. Ailer will review those with Cabinet, and then we should know what the selection of courses for the pilot program will be by March twenty twenty five. And then, of course, full steam ahead, plenty of work to do before then. So again, I thank you for your time, and there are a number of study abroad committee members here today and online, and so I'd just like to thank them for all their work because it is that effort that has gotten us this far along, and it has truly been a pleasure. So thank you so much.
All right, so we can bring things here to Ames, but it's also awesome that we're able to start reaching out and doing things that maybe traditionally haven't been seen in the community college space, and so just wanted to share with you guys a little bit about some of the things our faculty are up to. So any questions? She ran off, so you can't ask her. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Ames Staff Association, David Mont.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Shock, trustees, Rossom, Rothmer, cabinet members, colleagues, and friends. Good afternoon again. David Mont, that's the Ames Staff Association. I've got two event updates to start off. We, I mentioned last month that we were trying to, we had scheduled our our once-a-semester volunteer event with Well Food Bank. That did occur November fifteenth. It was a great event. We had great turnout. I think eighteen staff, I recall. And I was trying to pull up Instagram this morning. So I don't know if there's a technology, something else beyond just Ames, or maybe it is just, I don't know, but I could not access it to save my life. Because there is some, some great pictures up there with all of us there, and they actually have the little stat sheet that they like to do with volunteer groups of how many cans you stacked and how many bags of potatoes. I know Angie and Marina and I, we filled, I think, four pallets worth of potato sacks, so. Yeah, a lot of great work, great event, so it was very successful. Now, upcoming event is next Monday. It's upcoming Monday the sixteenth is our December ASA all-staff meeting to be followed by our annual holiday Christmas party. So we're looking forward to that. We're expecting that the party will have like a raffle and some snacks and some games and some fun things, just a social event for staff. So I look forward to seeing, seeing you all there. The last item from my presentation today, and I'd like to do this a little differently maybe than we've done in the past, in lieu of a ripple. I want to highlight actually a former employee, if I may. Rich Murphy worked for our department for four years in facilities. And he had to leave employment of the college suddenly in July of twenty three because of unexpected health concerns. And he battled those concerns or those issues for about seventeen months, and we just found out last week that he actually passed away November twenty ninth. So if I could, in lieu of a normal ripple recognition, I'd like to ripple in memoriam. I'll call that, for lack of a better word. So I'd like to read a couple, a couple lines from his obituary, and then I've got a few words of my own if I may. So Rich was, in his own words, "Jack of all trades, master of none, had many careers, but his true passion was building bicycles." He was no doubt a master of that craft. Rich crafted his trademarked Solis handcrafted bicycles, and had many good years as the proud owner of Rich's Bicycle Works. He truly loved his customers. He loved when his customers would come in the store to visit, and he met so many of his lifelong friends through bicycles. Always eager to help and exchange the many beauties of cycling and skiing alike. Rich had an abundance of passions, most involving the outdoors, biking, cross-country, and telemark skiing, camping, hiking, roller skating, kayaking, birding, tennis, dancing, and music, especially the blues. Rich had a love for reading and learning and continued to learn more about all the things he loved throughout his life. And a few of my own words. Rich was a sweet spirit in all my, my interactions with him. And we worked together directly for a couple of years before he and Shelby took over more of the daily furniture operations in twenty twenty. He was softly spoken, always quick and willing to help with anything, and had a charming smile. I know that many of us across the college also experienced and appreciated Rich's warmth and friendship. When he left, when he left Ames for medical reasons in twenty twenty-three, he left the college poor with his absence. And so in my official capacity as ASA president and representative of the college, I'd like to say thank you to Rich for all of his years of service, and Rich, you are missed. I stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, our SGA with Brielle Rummings.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board, Chair Shock, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet members, and the Ames community. I am here today to give my last presentation to the board. As we wrap up this year, here are a few statistics from student life that we have completed. Twenty-five students were inducted into NSLS. The graduate dinner was last week, celebrating over two hundred graduates and their loved ones. Campus activities programmers also hosted twenty-three events this fall semester, and we were able to get about nine hundred collective student check-ins. Pretty big number. Art gatherings have been held twice weekly since September eighth. They just finished on December fourth. Promoting the saying, "The opposite of addiction is not sobriety but connection." Like I said previously in the last spot meeting, one hundred and twenty Thanksgiving meals were successfully distributed to students on the Greeley and Windsor campuses. A few club highlights, Agriculture Club will adopt a family this holiday through the Salivation Army Adopt a Family Program. Lulac Club held a thrift store fundraiser earning about three hundred dollars to help fund their club events. Phi Theta Kappa held a hot cocoa and study session on the fourth for students for finals. The Radiology Program will be hosting their winter celebration in Cornerstone tomorrow. And the Games Club is hosting a game awards watch party as their end-of-the-year semester celebration. So like I mentioned, this is my last meeting. I am so grateful to be in a position where it kind of makes me sad, but I'm, I'm a biology major here. Here at Ames, I joined student government in the summer of twenty-three, completely freaked out because I had no idea about government, or money, or fundraising, or any sort of policy stuff. No idea. I had never been a part of student body, or council, or anything like that. So when Janet gave me this job, I said, "What the heck? What are you thinking?" Ames has been a part of my life since my mom took a triple A class here. I am extremely grateful to have been given just about half of the opportunities I have had through Ames to further my educational journey. Being president this year has has completely pushed me out of my comfort zone, giving me confidence, leadership skills, and building my sense of community. Next semester, I will transfer to UNC and continue my biological sciences degree with an emphasis in pre-health to work towards my long-term goal of earning my MD and matching into a surgical program to become a surgeon. It has been an incredible experience, and I'm excited for what is next. So speaking of next, I would like to ask that our SGA president for next year come up to the podium with me. Jeff Thatch will be taking over for me next semester. When I was asked, "Who would I recommend to take over my position on student government?", I of course mentioned my fellow SGA members, but Jeff has been a part of student life longer than I have, working for the pantry and campus activities, as well as being a scribble on student government for the past year and a half. All of these qualities made Jeff kind of a great candidate, but Jeff also has a bunch of other qualities, and he's an amazing person and a leader. I am so excited to formally introduce him as our next year's president. So that's all for my final report. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
You know, it's hard to take over the role of being a president. And you, well, you need to be proud of the fact that you've done it for the last year, and you've gotten out of your comfort zone, and it will serve you well as you go on to UNC and med school, and you need to be really excited about it, and we're very excited that you're gonna join us in the future. So thank you very much.
You've done a great job, Brielle. Love the energy and always that positive attitude. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Right? Anything? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm gonna take a quick pause and make sure we have a full quorum. We are getting into action items. And so is Jean on? I hear him. Yep. Heidi, were you able to join us?
I'm here. Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. And Janine?
Yes, I'm here, but only for a few more minutes.
Perfect, thank you. We do have a quorum, and so we will move into our action items. I appreciate everybody adjusting schedules for this. I think Chuck was kind of looking at me and saying, "Are we gonna get this done?" So our first action item is our mill levy certification for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Chuck Jensen, our Vice President of Administrative Services. Chuck?
Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Rothmer, colleagues, friends, students, yes. I was a little nervous there for a few minutes. But all's well. You have before you action item seven A. This is our mill levy certification for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This is a statutorily required activity of the board to certify, and we are required to turn in our certifications by December fifteenth, so it always works out really well at the December meeting to do this. You have before you our projected mill levy revenue as I presented in fairly, fairly in-depth at the budget assumptions meeting last month. Our mill levy revenue is estimated at a little over a hundred and three million, six hundred thousand. And it's comprised of the mill levies for Adams, Broomfield, Lemire, Laramore, Morgan, and Weld Counties, and also for Logan. One little interesting, you know, one little nuance this year, as you will see with Logan County, reducing the mill levies slightly because of the limit that was reached in the special session. Mill levies were across the state limited to a growth of five point two five percent over tax revenue received in fiscal year twenty-four. And so Logan County was the only county that exceeded that, and so that's why there's a slight reduction in that mill levy for Logan County for next year. Just a quick, you know, as we go forward, I don't anticipate that limit creating an issue for us because it's an accumulative limit. It's five point two five percent off a base year, which is revenue received in fiscal year twenty-four. So now, so then when we go now into fiscal year twenty-six, when we're talking this time next year, it will then be ten point five percent of our base year, so it's a cumulative effect each year. And so at this point, I don't project that it will affect our mill levies going forward in the future, but those will be conversations that will definitely be presenting to the board as we go through budget assumptions next year. And as this fiscal year winds up, you know, because everything's based on calendar years for tax assessed, tax valuations, we'll have a pretty good understanding here. You know, of course, clearly by the time we come into the April and May meetings of what calendar year twenty twenty-four meant for assessed values in Weld County. So if there's any, anything that come into my attention, of course, that would create any issues with our mill levies, I'll, of course, bring that to the board as soon as possible, but at this point, I don't project any of that happening going into the future. So with that said, the recommendation is to, for the board to certify the mill levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as presented. I have kind of questions.
Is there any questions? Any discussion? I think you've prepared us well. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
So, um, okay.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Oh, okay, I, I move that we pass the mill levy as it stands, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
John, all those in favor say aye.
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 Perfect. Okay. You should be good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to seven B, our new automotive collision and repair certificates with Dr. Ailer, our Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Thank you, Chair Shock, board members, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet, and guests. The automotive collision and repair program currently allows high school students in the Career Academy to earn a refinish technician certificate. However, this certificate does not align well with our Automotive Collision Repair Associate of Applied Science degree and restricts students from attaining additional Inter-Industry Conference on Auto Collision Repair, or I-Car badges. We propose expanding opportunities for students to take more industry certification exams, enabling them to earn three separate certificates, collision shop support personnel, basic refinishing assistant, and basic non-structural repair assistant. Additionally, students would complete two semesters of coursework that aligns with our AAS degree. These certificates will also be available to post-secondary students enrolled in the degree program. These three certificates are comprised of coursework that is already in the AAS degree. Our recommendation is to approve these three certificates.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the three new certificates developed in the existing courses as outlined by Dr. Ailer.
I motion to approve the presentation of the certificate.
Thank you, Janine. Is there a second? Jean, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move on to seven C. Um, as we start our sabbatical requests, and Dr. Ailer, I'm glad you just stayed up there. Um, I'll let you go ahead and start um, the first one, Daniel Alvarez.
Thank you. Daniel will research the subject of Latinx philosophy to understand and create a foundational Latinx philosophy curriculum. That will contribute meaningfully to students' understanding of diverse philosophical traditions. Based on this research, he'll create a new course in Latinx philosophy. Guaranteed transfer course for the Colorado Community College system. That may also serve as a multicultural studies requirement at at UNC. And this work will include a complete syllabus and D two L shell. A byproduct of this research will be the creation of a multicultural curriculum expansion and updates for philosophy one. One thousand eleven, which is Introduction to Philosophy and PHI ten twelve Ethics. Recommendation is to approve this sabbatical request.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve sabbatical request for Daniel Alvarez.
Um, I I'd like to move um, to approve um, the sabbatical um. For Dr. Alvarez, the doctor, um, I'm really excited to hear um, the end results. Excited about this program.
Thank, thank you, Trustee Wendell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Haley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next sabbatical request with Mark Jarnot.
Thank you. Mark's sabbatical plan is to interview, shadow, and engage in the work of various accounting businesses of different sizes and locations. To witness current industry operations. And glean information to infuse into our accounting curriculum at Ames. With a focus on enrolled agent tech service practices. Use of technology, specifically artificial intelligence. And DEI initiatives in the workplace. This experience will enable Mark to embed industry trends and practices in our curriculum. To provide an up-to-date view of students' potential career choices. And ensure that students develop the knowledge and skills needed to successfully enter the accounting field. The recommendation is to approve this. Um, sabbatical request.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve Mark. I'm not sure if I'm saying his last name Jarnet. Um, for his sabbatical leave. I hear Jean.
Yep, we have a motion from Jean.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, John. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move on to seven E with Stacy Johnson's sabbatical request.
Stacy will build an Ames-specific toolkit on faculty practices for developing community and belonging in the classroom. This toolkit will take the form of a Google site that will link to digital offerings in the Faculty Teaching and Learning Center. As a thorough set of concrete practices and resources that faculty can reference to create stronger. More inclusive communities and increase retention and persistence. This project will supplement the FTLC's current work on belonging. And contribute to the college's goal to increase gateway course completion and success. And to collaborate cross-divisionally to enact proven, high-impact practices which positively impact student outcomes. Recommendation is to approve this sabbatical request.
I can move um, this battle request for um, Miss Stacy Johnson.
Thank you, Heidi.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, we have one final one, um, Carrie Noble's sabbatical request.
Okay, Carrie will research current trends to understand how we can best support the mental health of all Ames students. Specifically, those entering the fields of healthcare and emergency response. Her focus will be on student mental health and preparation for the mental rigor and challenges of caregiving careers. As part of her research, she will interview Ames med prep graduates working in healthcare. To learn about their mental health struggles, how our curriculum benefited them, and where we can improve our curriculum. To better prepare students for the mental health rigors of the healthcare field. She will also informally interview her clients at hearts and horses. To gather more data on the effects of animal therapy on mental health. She will also research and she will analyze the possibility of adding a mental health technician certificate program to the Ames offerings. The recommendation is to approve the sabbatical request.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Carrie Noble's sabbatical request.
We we have a motion from Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
Second.
Thanks, John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on next to our informational items. Um, first up is Trustee Wendell with our Foundation Board Liaison Report.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I'm I'm not there in person. My husband had a full hip replacement this morning. He's doing well, but trying to figure out the pain. Um, angle right now, but um, I am so excited to be the liaison on um, to the Foundation Board this year. And um, Kelly Jackson um. Gave me some notes which were great, and primarily I'm just going to read them. Um, I'd like, if if they're there, um, we'd like to introduce the Foundation staff. Um, Ally Bolter is the Foundation Business Support. We have Andrea Martinez, who's the Database Manager and Annual Fund Administrator. We also have Jordan Wagner, who's Development and Corporate Engagement Officer. And then Kelly Jackson is at the helm, who's the Executive Director. Um, they're working on their fundraising policy and. The foundation is creating a college-wide fundraising policy that will help build some community and outreach. And fundraising tactics with um, all who represent Ames, including the foundation. This will come forward for approval in the near future, so we'll all see something in the near future on that. They're working on this strategic planning, excuse me. A consultant search right now is um, happening. Um, for the next uh, Foundation Strat Plan and fundraising plan um, is underway. And they host, the foundation hosts their annual retreat in May. Um, and in preparation for this retreat, um, the consultant that they will select. Will work with the Foundation staff, the board, and the various stakeholders on the strategic plan and the fundraising plan. Um, they've also completed their annual year-end letters. Um, and they call it the Year-End Appeal. And they did mail to current and lapsed donors, and the foundation has redesigned the format of the letter, making it. More donor-centric and a kind of a quick read. And I know Andrea um, did a lot of work on that and specified the. Letters more particular for each client, which is really nice. I shouldn't say client, but donors. Um, and then staffing. Last year at this time, which seems just crazy because the whole year went by fast. Um, the second development officer was hired and paid for by the foundation, which is Jordan Wagner. She kicked off her Ames integration with the Aviation Day event, big event. And continues to cultivate corporate relationships as well as helping to build parameters for internal collaboration and community requests. Um, so they're ju- they're just doing great, a great job at the foundation. So strategic plan and goals and achievement, um. It's very important to talk about this. Um, their goals were to add fifty new donors. Year to date, they have a hundred and fifty-two new donors. Um, they would like to increase the contribution level of a hundred donors. And there at thirty-two donors have increased their giving already. And increase the total giving by two hundred and fifty thousand, their goal of one point two five million for the year. As of year to date, they've raised four hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and nine thousand dollars, and that's. Right before this year-end appeal letters, which brings them quite a bit of funding, so. They're on their way to success again. Um, Kelly did point out that there's five scholarship focus areas. Um, Artie's Pantry, which we all know and love and helps our students greatly. There's also a Tools of the Trade Scholarship, which I think is really interesting, and so that is someone who could donate art supplies for the art. Art areas, or if someone has welding um, equipment, they could donate to the welding. Um, department as well, et cetera. Um, there's a Student Emergency Fund. Um, as well as the College Promise Program, and then Genus Scholarships. So all in all, the foundation is doing great work, and um, I'm really excited to see what happens this year. So, thank you for letting me read this to everyone.
Great, thanks, Heidi, and and the Foundation staff is here, so we did um, have.
Yay.
So, um, any questions for Heidi or Kelly? Thank you for all the great work. Thank you, Trustee Wendell. Okay, next up, have events, calendar, and upcoming work session with Jerry Harvey, our Board Liaison.
Thank you, Chair Shock. Uh, you'll find in your packet first the Board Trustees' Calendar of Upcoming Events. Um. Between now and the end of the year, there are only a couple more events. One of the biggest ones, of course, is commencement. This Friday here downstairs in the auditorium. Um, beginning at three P M. So if trustees could be in the green room by between two and two fifteen, that way we'll get you your robes and we'll get you on stage. Uh, we also have the Fire Academy graduation and Police Academy graduations on the fourteenth on Saturday over in the Windsor Campus. Uh, eleven A M. For the Fire Academy and two P M. For the Police Academy. As far as upcoming uh. Agendas and meetings, the next meeting up is the um. Board Retreat in January, so that'll kind of segue into the next item on the agenda there that I'll cover. Um, I'll give you a brief update on where that stands and what to expect. Um, the January Retreat will be January the fourteenth. Here at the Welcome Center downstairs in the second floor conference room. Uh, from eight thirty A M. Or P M. Uh, we'll have, as usual, light snacks between eight thirty and nine, and then starting promptly at nine A M. On the fourteenth with our agenda. The agenda will consist of a few different parts. Uh, the first part will be an overall um, an overview of programs and services and an overall campus footprint for all the satellite campuses. And then moving into um, the same for the Greeley Campus. The Greeley Campus will include a tour. Uh, of different um, programs, a few different programs and buildings here on campus. Um, and then we will end the day with um, a book club uh, for the board over the book imaginable. Um. I will be sending out uh, at the end of this week, some additional information and resources related to that. Uh, to give the board an idea of what to expect for that. Book club, uh, some preliminary questions to be thinking about as you read through the book. Uh, may help guide your reading, um, and then prompt you with some um. Some futurist thoughts, uh, thinking into the future. So any questions about any of those items? Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next up, CEO President's Report, Dr. Russ Roffler.
Thank you, Chair Shock. I'd first like to call Dr. David Ailer, our Vice President of Academic Affairs. To provide an overview of the Business and Technology Division.
Thank you, Dr. Rothmer. Chair Shock, trustees, guests. I'm stalling for a second while the PowerPoint comes up. So we will be uh, over the next several months highlighting the academic divisions of the college. And for the first one, we are going to be doing business and technology highlights. So. The Business and Technology Division claims to be the best division. Because they offer our annual week-long event, Battle of Energy Science and Technology. So they are. The sponsors of the best. The division has thirteen CTE programs, and those are specifically listed on the handout that's in your packet, thirteen there. In those thirteen programs, we have thirty-two distinct associate degrees. Nine degrees with a designation for transfer. And ninety-two certificates, which is about sixty percent of the certificates offered by Ames. As college-wide, the enrollment is up significantly this fall. Head count is up thirty-one percent from a year ago. The programs leading the way were construction management, which had an increase of a hundred and thirty-six percent. Followed by marketing and management at fifty-nine percent. And engineering technology and CAD at fifty-seven percent. Among our industry partnerships, this month we want to highlight Chevron. Which is helping our oil and gas program remodel our wellhead. And update it with working controls so that we can use it as a simulator for instruction. Our strategic initiatives. In this division include uh, piloting the first Ames competency-based education program, which will be in the field of welding. And the development of the Study Abroad Program, which with the college-wide team led by Professor Jennifer Markowitz. Who you heard from earlier, and those are uh, some of the highlights out of the Business and Technology Division. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ailer, and if you could please continue with the course and lab fees.
Okay. So the the course and lab fees for the coming year are mostly impacted by the beginning of the Aviation Maintenance Technology Program. Um, those courses will start in spring of twenty twenty-six. Course approvals are in process, and uh, the fees associated with those are in the materials that you have. The range of course fees for the Maintenance Technology Program are very similar to the pilot program in aviation. We have this year a total of eighteen new fees for next year. Fourteen of those eighteen are in the aviation program for the the maintenance program. And we had eight fees that were removed. The remainder of the changes are mostly uh, increases in inflation and costs. And uh, some courses we're not offering anymore, those were removed. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ailer. Okay. Next, I'd like to reintroduce Chuck Jensen, our Vice President of Administrative Services, to introduce our legislative pre-session report.
Chair Shock, members of board, Dr. Rothmer, thank you. Yes, it's that uh, time of the year where we invite our our lobbyists to do a pre-session for the board. And uh, we'll have both uh, Tanet Salazar and Dylan Pepper presenting, and. Technology is serving us well. I think Dylan Dylan is starting us off. Or we could jump to Tanet.
Yes, I'm happy to start the essence of time.
Well, we go ahead and start with uh, Tanet Salazar, uh, as our lobbyist in pre-session. So take it away, Tanet.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be presenting to you all again as we gear up for another legislative session. Um, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Dylan Pepper, who just joined to start us off, and then I will wrap this up.
Good afternoon, everybody, and um, thank you for having us. We're going to kind of walk through a couple things today. What, we're going to start with property taxes and kind of where where we came from. Um. I'm going to forecast for you that we are not going to see additional property tax changes in the current year. Um, I'm then going to talk a little bit about budget uh, and the state of Colorado, kind of where we find ourselves. And then we wanted to highlight particularly, given your tax base, a little bit of potential uh, energy and environmental uh, legislation. Um, so starting with the property taxes, we have finally kind of made it out of what I would say the property tax wars. Um, the deal that we saw cut in the special session in August that uh, led to the removal of those two ballot measures, I do believe is going to. Stand and going. stand and going to not be changed or amended by the legislature. There's real fatigue, both in legislature, as well as whether it's county commissioners, advocates, activists. There's real agreement that we don't want to continue to have these battles. We want to see what we've done. As you know, significant changes were made, including both lowering the rates as well as bifurcating K twelve education out of, out of, you know, the different mills that everybody charges. The second change that was made that was rather substantive, that's going to take a little while for county assessors to actually implement, is the ten percent off of seven hundred thousand. So we have three years, the next three years are really going to be implementing the deal that was finally cut this August. So I don't believe we will see any additional changes during that time. And then the larger deal that was struck was for no, no changes by the legislature or by the advocates for another six years. So I find the, I'm hopeful that we will get a little more stability and a little more certainty in our property tax code. Kind of moving on to the state budget. I, we are in a very different position than we've been in the last five years as we presented to you. Now that the ARPA money is officially rolled off, and now that the, I would say Colorado's budget is kind of normalized. A lot of the spending that we did, that the state did over the last five years has really kind of, the bill has come due. And so the state of Colorado is in about a one point, it's anywhere between one point one and one point three billion dollar structural budget deficit. What that means is that everything is on the table this year for funding reductions. I believe that the legislature and in particular Joint Budget Committee has been very clear that funding both K twelve and higher education remains a priority. The problem that we see and the friction that we see this year is there's not really money to fund higher education. That's reflective in the governor's budget proposal, where he only asked for twelve point eight million dollars in new money for higher education. Ames gets the average of the increase. So it's really not much money the governor's asking for. I will say the institutions of higher education are very, currently working very well together in a unified voice about the need for additional funds to kind of meet core minimum costs. They got together and they sent a letter to the the Budget Committee that essentially said their core minimum cost for this current year is sixty-eight million dollars. When we're facing a one point one or one point three billion dollar budget deficit, I, I, I think they're going to struggle to get that additional money because it would result in cuts elsewhere. So I, I think we're going to be closer to no increase or essentially flat funding for higher education as a whole, or a minor increase closer to the number that the governor that the governor asked for. Elsewhere, the governor's also looking at some additional workforce funding. And for the two years, I think Tanet's going to touch on a little bit of that at the end. But it is, it is going to be a long and hard fought budget year this year in the state of Colorado. And then I'll get to the last thing before we do questions. So every year we kind of forecast, you know, what's coming in the environmental space, given the tax base and how reliant it is on oil and gas operations. I'm here to say that, kind of like the property tax wars, there was a ballot measure battle last year where oil and gas companies pulled several ballot titles and some of the environmental NGOs ran two bills. They were Senate Bill one sixty-five and one sixty-six, it would have dramatically altered emissions regulations in the state of Colorado. As an agreement reached between the environmental community and the business community, the ballot measures were pulled and those bills went away. And then the governor negotiated a three-year essentially timeout on new regulations related to oil and gas, but all emissions and emissions reductions. I think you're going to see the governor champion things like twenty forty sector-wide emissions reductions. That's going to be heavily focused on the transportation sector and kind of the whatever, the generation side, so XL Black Hills, those type of groups. But I think at least for the time being, the oil and gas industry in Colorado isn't as at the center of the bullseye as they usually are. And I say that a little hesitantly because after November's election, I think a lot of Colorado is waiting to see the legislators and elected officials, what, what changes do the Trump administration make in the environmental space? I believe that any major changes that they make, the state of Colorado will likely come in and try to implement similar federal-type regulations. But it's going to be very difficult to do that when we don't have any money. So I think, at least for the time being, I'm more optimistic to sort of be quieter, both on the property tax side, but also on the environmental and regulation side as well. And I will pass it back to Tanet.
So continuing in the vein of trying to anticipate what's going to happen at the federal level, there is a lot of conversation focusing on K twelve, higher education and immigration. No one knows for sure what the next presidential administration is going to do via executive order or in working with Congress. But there are many conversations with advocate groups, legislators, the Attorney General's Office, around what might we anticipate? Starting with what I will say most extreme worst-case scenario, based on what we've seen in the media is the elimination of the Department of Education. What does that look like? What happens to the funding? How does that impact our K twelve system as well as our higher ed system? What does that mean for federal student loans and federal funding in the higher ed space and federal funding and other key support services for students like special education and other categoricals such as that? And looking at how does the state fund Medicaid and Medicare? That is the largest portion of the state's budget. It is about thirty-six percent of the state's budget right now. We currently have a federal waiver that allows us to capture cost savings in our current health insurance plans and have that money flow back to the state to help offset the costs of those plans. It is several hundred millions of dollars coming into the state, and there is a potential that those waivers will end. And this just, all of these situations add to the budget challenges that Dylan explained. As far as policy changes, I think we would, we would not be wise if we weren't thinking about some of the impacts on some of our programs at specific student populations, looking at our, our trio programs, our D E I programs, and, and some of those very specific student support programs. Will those continue? Will they be required to end in order to receive state funding? Nobody really knows right now, but we're trying to think through some possible scenarios and in a financial standpoint as well as in a policy standpoint. And Colorado has supported its immigrants for a very long time and has a strong track record of doing so. We have institution for undocumented children that we've had for well over a decade. We have concurrent enrollment. We have other protections for K twelve students. And we also know that our workforce, the immigrants who help our workforce are essential to Colorado's economy. For example, they make up thirty percent of the construction workforce in Colorado. And so what is the downstream effect on housing supply that is so desperately needed in the state? And so trying to evaluate what policies we have in place, what might happen for funding and changes with the executive orders with the next administration is largely unknown at this point, but something that a lot of legislators are talking about and trying to anticipate. So we will see legislation in reaction to whatever comes after January twentieth in the twenty twenty-five session. The last issue that we will talk about before taking questions is a report that came out of legislation that was adopted last year. In House Bill thirteen sixty-four, there was a so-called audit of post-secondary and workforce readiness programs, and the Department of Education was tasked with doing that work. That report was just released on December first, and the state board just recently discussed it. In evaluating these programs, they are looking at which programs provide post-secondary credit, which have work-based learning, which lead to industry certification. They're looking at the cost of instructors, depending on whether it's done at a high school or a local district or community college. They're looking at the cost of courses when offered through the high school versus attending the college separately. And they're looking at fees. Finally, they're looking at the access that students have. Is it consistent? Is there disparity with rural school districts? Given our current state of budget affairs, cuts are going to have to be made. And so this is one area where they're trying to see if there's efficiencies that could be gained from consolidating programs. And so one of the recommendations that has come out of this report is to consolidate all of the concurrent enrollment paths. And there's many out there. There's P-Tech, there's Ascent, and many others. And they want to look at standardizing those tuition agreements for concurrent enrollment. So it's a flat fee across the board, whether it's a four-year institution or two-year institution. They want to have those consistent tuition rates developed through cooperative agreements. They also want to make sure that online courses apply to this too. Because currently, the state is paying the K twelve per pupil revenue dollar amount for students to attend these courses as opposed to what they pay right now if the student was only enrolled in a higher ed institution. They are also looking at modifying some of the reimbursement models for these programs and putting caps on the fifth and sixth year programs that allow students to earn an associate's degree or certificate while, while they are still in high school. So they're reassessing all of these programs, looking for realignment and looking at the original intention of which student population groups did they ideally want these programs to serve. And so this is a monumental policy shift and a funding shift because with looking at these recommendations, they would also try to consolidate all of the currently existing funding streams for post-secondary and workforce training within K twelve. And so lots of conversation. This is coming at a time when we're looking to make budget cuts as well. So I think some folks are nervous, we're trying to really understand what this means for existing programs. We bring it to your attention because we know the partnerships that you have with your school districts in each of these various concurrent enrollment programs, and so you likely will be hearing from those partners very soon. So with that, we are happy to pause and take questions if anyone has them.
Any questions from the board? Session hasn't even started, Tanet, and here we are.
It feels like session already. Dylan and I were just chatting about that earlier this week.
We always appreciate your updates. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you, Chuck. Next, we have Zach McFarlane, our Chief Marketing and Communications Officer. We'll do a marketing and communications mid-year update. Zach.
Read for that PowerPoint. Excuse me. Dr. Rothmer, Chair Shock, members of the board, everyone here, appreciate the time. I'm excited about this one. I was able to sneak in a PowerPoint without putting it in the board packet. Thank you, Dr. Rothmer, to kind of have a little bit of a flair for the dramatic. And I wanted this to be more of a kind of an unveiling for a pretty major initiative that the events team has been working on, that I have the honor of being able to show you all today. So real quick, just wanted to start with this purpose, vision, mission. Purpose, opening doors to enrich lives for a better tomorrow. Vision, looking ahead to empower the future today. Mission, provide knowledge, skills, support, services to advance the quality of life, economic vitality and overall success of the diverse communities we serve. You guys know it because you wrote it, right? And amended it over time here. And, and we have our values, authenticity, truthfulness, community, equity and professional respect, inclusiveness, performance excellence and effectiveness. One thing I've appreciated about working at Ames, I'm pushing six years at this point, is that this isn't, you know, these things actually mean something here, right? They're not just sitting on mouse pads and then sitting around the walls and having people have to walk under them, wondering what the organization is doing to live out those values. Every day, we, we see these in effect. I look at something like SACE and the We Educate Program that they've been working really hard on that, that I think is just an outstanding initiative here to ensure that students aren't just coming to Ames and getting knowledge, right? But that they're developing whole people, competent, balanced individuals, really working with them on self-awareness, connections, resilience, grid, impact, to make sure that above and beyond their knowledge, you know, when they go back out into our community, and the vast majority of the students at Ames do, that they've been able to, to work through a curriculum that makes them, you know, better people, more, you know, resilient people, more self-aware people. And I think that's an outstanding reflection of the values of Ames and of our mission, our purpose and our vision. Same thing with the GROW program. If you look at employee services and H R and what they've been able to do. And I had a chance a month ago, approximately a month ago, to really interact with a lot of the GROW program. And you start to see Ames's investment in its, in its own people, right? To make sure that they're learning and growing and becoming and developing at a, at a cost of this institution that, that really begins to showcase that, again, we don't just, you know, say we believe in our mission, our purpose, our values, and our, you know, we actually live that out. And we put innovative things into practice to ensure that those are demonstrated and lived. Even go to, you know, Academic Affairs, Ames Workforce Innovation Center, you know, building a hub for our community to interact with. People who out in our community want, might have a really great idea, and they want a space with, you know, a really amazing space with the technology that's in it, where they can develop themselves and their ideas to benefit our community, our state, even maybe even our, our nation. Airframe and Power Plant Program, looking at national and state needs, filling those needs, giving people in our community access to, to jobs and programs. Again, you know, lived values, even the, the development of the spaces, when you look at facilities, they, they live it when they create these spaces. When they go out there and, and look at, you know, places that we want to be in, that we want to interact with, that we want to experience. You know, I mean, top to bottom, you know, Ames again, lives its purpose, its mission, its values. Look at the building that we're in right now, and then that's going to move me to my point, which you all want me to get to, right? Award-winning facility built to extend opportunities to the larger northern Colorado community. The, the iconic front door to the campus that was built that we're sitting in right now. You know, I wasn't here when it was conceptualized, but I did read a lot of the documentation about it and what they wanted. You know, the, the community came and, and helped us push this initiative through to, to give our community access to, to space and to opportunities, to events that, you know, in this sized location that they did not have access to before. That, when you, when you go back and you start reading some of the, the, you know, documentation on this, you, you start to see your call to action, especially as an events team that sits with MarCom, on what we need to do with this building. First and foremost is the actual event space, you know, all of the, the rooms that are bookable, from the conference room to the full building. You know, providing access to that space for all of the, the businesses in our area, the corporations, you know, anyone who needs it. Since opening in December of twenty twenty-one, and, and it's worth noting, when you look at these numbers, for the first almost two years, we were heavily restricting the volume of events that we even booked here. It was very small, as far as what we allowed, what we got our paces under us and figured out how to even use this space. But we've actually been able to welcome a hundred and fifty external clients, right? That's a hundred and fifty, and, and what you see in there is if they booked it for a week, that's one, right? When that balloon thing was here for, for over a week, that's one of those hundred and fifty. Three hundred and fifty internal college events have been held here. There's been a total of two thousand eighty-six individual room or date bookings. That's more than days, if you added up the three years, right? That's more, there's multiple things happening here from an event space usage than, than we have days in the year, right? So, so if you build it, they will come. We built it and they have come. The events team, who I asked to be here today while, while we presented this, because they've done some pretty outstanding work that you're about to be able to see, above and beyond just this. We've recently welcomed a new baby on the events team. We've recently had a marriage on the events team. This team has actually been down to one person navigating internal and external events on multiple occasions. And, and they have had to grow and grow alongside this Welcome Center and everything that it meant to this community and college as well. And I think by and large, they have done an amazing and outstanding job of doing so. You know, right below us, there's an auditorium, right? Event space and meeting space is one thing, the auditorium is another thing. It'll hold in its current setup, fifteen hundred and eighty-three people. Two hundred and seventy of them in the sky boxes, eight sixty-three in those blue upper bowls, and four fifty in the lower bowls. We, we, we recently have two comedians come, Dude Dad and Charlie Barons. And, and Charlie Baron sold out. I would, I would say Dude Dad was sellout adjacent. He was right, right next to a sellout, but we were able to kind of use those events to hone in on our security, our facilities, operations, our procedures, our policies for external people coming here when they're buying tickets, looking at marketing and promotion practices, our ticketing system. You know, how do we operate when people have paid for a seat to come here? How do we move them through? What do ushers look like and such? And, and, and we use those two events, and, and while we were doing those, we kind of always had our eyes on, on what's next. You know, we're learning all of these things and what do we want to come next? And, and looking Uh, and, and looking at something like, you know, Dr. Rothmer is always really good to remind, especially me. Uh, we're a learning college. So when we think what's next, uh, we need to be oriented toward learning, right? And how do we use our space and everything that we've learned? And so that gives me uh, the privilege of, of introducing this. And this is our brand new, uh, this is the first time we're announcing that our, our Spotlight Speaker Series. Um, our topic this year is going to be exploring leadership. Um, and really what this is, I'll just read it, the Ames Spotlight Speaker Series. It's bringing impactful stories of unique life experiences and areas of expertise to a wide audience. Students, business, community leaders, if you work in government, nonprofit, lifelong learner. You'll come away from these talks with ideas and perspectives that can change your mind and inspire you to help change the world. What does this mean? Uh, oh, sorry, we're going to go here real quick. So uh, Alison Byerly, who's here as well, has really worked to create a nice sub-brand on this. Um, this is kind of its own experience. Uh, it's a Spotlight Speaker Series presented by Ames Community College. Uh, this is going to help differentiate it as a pretty significant community initiative uh, that, that has its own unique identity that's going to be recognizable. Um, we're going to push this for two years and see how it goes. First year you'll see uh, here in a second. Uh, it's TED Talk adjacent, 50 to 60 minute presentation. Uh, 34, 30 to 45 minute moderated Q and A immediately following speaker remarks. Uh, will happen at seven to eight thirty. I'm going to give you dates. You might want to write those down. Uh, seven to eight thirty, that's typically a Wednesday or a Thursday. Uh, we have already secured four speakers and that brings me to the next thing. Who are our speakers? These are external to Ames. Um, and it's pretty, it's, it's pretty exciting. Um, and so for the first uh, of our annual Spotlight Speaker Series, our first speaker is Dr. Amy Cuddy. Uh, social psychologist, bestselling author and keynote speaker. Uh, wrote Your Body Language May Shape Who You Are was her TED Talk. That is the second most viewed TED Talk with over 70 million views um, of all time. Uh, she wrote the book Presence. Many people, uh, many in the audience have probably either read that book or seen her TED Talk. Um, her presentation will be on September 24th, 2025. Um, Personal Power and Presence: Bringing Your Boldness Self to Challenges. Uh, this is kind of what she'll be speaking on. Uh, fear, anxiety, regret and high-pressure situations. Um, overcoming barriers to presence and confidence, building trust and using body language effectively. Looking at your breathing, posture, movement, speech, uh, all of that, helping your confidence, your performance and your inspiration. That'll be our first speaker. Uh, like I said, September 24th, uh, 2025, next fall. Second speaker is Leif Babin, a former US Navy SEAL officer, co-author of Extreme Ownership alongside Jaco Willink. Um, leadership trainer uh, in the SEAL Training Pipeline. He will be here on October 30th, talking about extreme ownership. Um, I'm excited about this. I, I think it's an area of leadership that we actually don't talk about enough. And that is uh, when problems feel overwhelming, it's our human nature to shift blame, find excuses and avoid consequences. Now, how to take ownership over what went wrong and accept the reality of the situation. Um, gives us a deeper understanding of leadership principles that they, that they discussed in the book and how to implement them in real life. Third speaker is Dr. Myron Rolle, Pediatric Neurosurgery Fellow at Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital, Chairman and Founder of the Caribbean Neurosurgery Foundation, former NFL player, comes out of the Rolle family. There's a bunch of them that play in the NFL. Um, he went to Oxford. He's a, he's an Oxford scholar out of the NFL. Inspired Leadership: Learning from the Giants on February 4th, 2026. Uh, Lessons from the Giants, Insights from Leaders Like Mandela, Dubois and Anon. Uh, Identity, Purpose: Preparing Mind, Body, Soul. Take Action, Lead with Intent. Um, and Empowering Strategies to Inspire and Mobilize True Leadership. Uh, he's an outstanding individual and human being. We're very lucky to have. The fourth speaker is Ambassador Soli Solenberger, Air Force Academy graduate, Air Force fighter pilot. Uh, Miracle on the Hudson. I think at one point I heard he is America's grandpa, right? Uh, that's who's going to be here. Uh, March 26th, we have two dates, I believe, we're working on with him. He wants to wait till mid-January um, to hone it in for his own personal calendar. So we'll get that date soon. Uh, I think we know mid-January when that actual date will be firm then, but it will be March of 2026. And he will be here talking about leading by example. Um, fostering passion for excellence, building trust within teams and committing to the highest standards, inspiring and empowering teams to excel under any challenge. Um, I want to give a shout out to Anna, uh, who has the coolest hair at Ames Community College. Uh, she uh, has worked very hard uh, with these speakers, with their agents to get the dates lined up, the contracts, the red line alongside uh, employment service or administrative services. And it's, she's done a phenomenal job. It's been fun working with her on this. Um, looking at what topics we wanted to bring here, you know, how the community can interact with them. Really the whole marketing and communications team and events team has a hand um, in the development, this everything from ticketing systems to when we launch our marketing and, and communications campaign. One of the coolest parts about this though is um, you know, our price points. We're doing a four, uh, season pass, all four speakers are included. Um, so you buy the pass, reserve seating, it's a hundred dollars for the sky box, 200 for the upper bowl, 250 for the lower bowl. So really again, in Ames fashion, being able to provide this level of speaker at affordable costs across um, the community so that people have access to those. Uh, myself and Dr. Rothmer have worked, uh, in, in a cabinet really have worked to ensure that we have ticketing options for students that we, that we're finalizing, that we have ticketing options for all of our employees that we're finalizing that will be involved in the role of this. So, so all levels of our community from external to internal will be able to have access to these uh, four speakers. Um, like I said, we're giving this a two-year shot. Um, I think there will be massive interest in this. Um, the, we, I think Terry will probably hopefully finalize the moderator next week. I, I think, so I'll have an announcement on that later. Um, Terry's been uh, helpful with me on that. So we'll have a moderator. Uh, hopefully it's two years. We already know the next three speakers. I'm not doing that today. We'll save that for this time next year. Um, and then we'll finalize them. But this is a significant uh, initiative for Ames. I, I, again, I go back to this building. I go back to the opportunity that we have here in this space to live our purpose, our mission and our values. To, to, to really bring something to our community that's unique, that's special, that, that is within our wheelhouse of, of sharing uh, knowledge that helps them could be a, you know, just become a, a quality of life, economic vitality and success of, of the communities we serve. So uh, it's, it's, it's awesome. Uh, I stand for any questions and thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay. Might be on, hey. I don't think there's questions. I'm excited. Yeah, I mean, that's a great lineup and um, I do think from a community, it'll be a great opportunity possibly. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. And Chair Shock, with your support, I'd like to delay our strategic and tactical plan update by cabinet till our next meeting in February and move to the recognition of new employees. So if we have any supervisors here with new team members, you could please come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock and members of the board and cabinet members. Um, I would like to introduce to you Dave Arnold, our new Director for Police Studies and Criminal Justice Programs. So Dave has been in law enforcement for 29 years. 28 with the LaSalle Police Department. The last four years as the chief of the police in LaSalle. He's a graduate of Ames with an Associate of Arts in Criminal Justice. Ames, he also graduated from a Ames Peace Officer Academy. Like to extend a warm welcome to Dave Arno or Chief Arno, I should call him. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morland. And Chair Shock, that concludes the president's report.
Great, thank you. And thank you to the cabinet for the flexibility on some of the adjusting on the schedule as well. We do appreciate that and um, uh, thanks for a little bit of grace with the board um, in our adjusting schedules um, today. So. John, I don't know if you have any other comments to make? I think you have a couple.
I, I wish everybody a very merry holiday. Whatever you worship or whoever you worship, I hope that you and your family have a blessed time together and, and uh, I'll look forward to seeing you when we return in February. On Wednesday, November 27th, Dr. Frank Gordon passed away. And Dr. Gordon was one of the uh, inaugural faculty members at Ames. And so I think it's important that we remember our past and, and he, he studied uh, Christianity and he talked a lot about different political science uh, areas. And so, you, you know, we need to celebrate these people and the things that they brought to our institution. And you know, Dr. Bukowski, um, no, on November 23rd, there was a nice article in the Greeley Tribune by Sharon Dunn from uh, the Prairie Mountain Media, and it talked about our relationship with uh, sunrise and how it's going to be more than just pure doctors and, and nurses, but mental health as well. And I wanted to thank him for doing a good job uh, representing us in that article. So thank you.
Thanks, John. And again, I hope everybody has a great holiday. Um, it's been a great year. Here's to 2025. So anything else for the good of the order? Okay. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. I'll second it. All of them favor. Aye. Thank you.